Excuse me. All right, we'll call to order the Farmington Board of Education meeting for Monday, May 20, 2019. If we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item on the agenda, 5B Summer Curriculum Process and Projects.
So this is a presentation we provide to the board each year, and Veronica is here to provide an overview of the work that we hope to accomplish this summer.
So I feel like you've seen many of these things already. You know, this is the one of those reports where you've already seen many of these in the budget planning process, and then you're going to see them again today when we talk about some of them, about what the new courses are. But I thought I would just talk about it in the way of just putting it in the larger context of the major shifts. I think that maybe one of the questions sometimes is, you know, when is our curriculum writing ever going to be done? And it's never, okay? Because it's something that is always evolving as our schools evolve and as our schools and our students evolve. And we see curriculum writing actually as the best form of training. It's one of the ways that, you know, and it goes back to something we learned from Richard Elmore, that you learn the work by doing the work. And sometimes doing the work is rebuilding, you know, different curriculum units. So in any case, that's what's, you know, going on this summer. We have at every level, you can see them all listed there. And I'd say that roughly, you know, some of the things that we're doing in the curriculum as we rewrite it is really paying attention to these major shifts. And this is not a new slide, you've seen it before. But really, as we've moved from content-based standards to core content and vision of the graduate, we need to keep putting that into our curriculum documents. We've shifted our assessments of assessment of learning to student-engage assessment practices. So that's really stage two of our curriculum design, of understanding by design. So that continues to always need revision and work as we get better and learn more. And then instruction, of course, from teacher-directed to student-centered practices in our framework for teaching and learning. And I'm going to come back to that because that's a big emphasis of our work this year in our major curriculum academies. We have two major curriculum academies, and that's really the focus. But I also want to say that in the social-emotional, I think we're just at the beginnings of really understanding how to integrate that into our curriculum. So we're going to do some preliminary work in that area, especially through our advisory programs for this summer, but you'll see a lot more. So that'll be a theme in the years to come, sort of the integration of the SEL. So there's a little bit of it this year, but you'll see more and more of that in the coming years. And they all represent these major shifts that have been around for a while. So I just want you to know that sometimes it feels like, oh, like something's always new, or people will say, oh, initiatives, or something like that. But we can relate most of our improvement practices back to, you know, we're trying to make these shifts that we know we need to make for our students, you know, given, you know, the times we live in and what we're, what they're going into, that it's not anymore, you know, sit and get kind of a curriculum, but more of, you're going to be in a world where you're going to be asked to be creative and innovative and a critical thinker, and we need to make sure that all those skills can be practiced and applied in their courses. So anyway, so I just want to put it in a larger context before I even start telling you some of the projects, but you can see them there. And so none of those should be foreign to you. I do think that maybe the last one in the upper, you know, in elementary and upper elementary says digital citizenship curriculum. You should just know that we keep working on that, that's an important aspect of our work. And ILLT, just so you know, that's what we used to call the media, the media library, but it's information, literacy, and learning technologies. So that's really our library and our media specialists together work as a group, and that's the name of it, so just so you know what that is. Middle school curriculum projects, all of the changes that are there are just continued work of, you know, improving based on these major shifts that I just talked about. So there's nothing surprising there, just continued work and revisions to align to those shifts. High school curriculum projects, a lot of the ones that you see there, so it's on the next page, a lot of the ones you see there are really related to our change in our math pathway that we've been discussing for the past several years. You'll see on there Sign Language New Map, that was also in last year's, but it never got accomplished last year. We weren't able to provide that class, and we didn't have somebody to write it, so we're trying again. So we're going to be trying to staff that and then write a new map there. And also to point out there, AP Teacher One Day Institute, we've heard from the Advanced Placement Program that they've made a lot of changes in their program, including new sort of guiding documents. And so they promised that we would have them by now several times. We still don't have them, but we want to have teachers who teach AP to have a couple of days to sit down with those new documents and be able to adjust their curriculum so that they're ready for the fall. And nothing's a surprise, you don't want to be looking at that for the first time in September, or even August, I should say. And then you can see there Special Curriculum Projects, those are many times either interdisciplinary or cross many levels, and so they're in that category there, or they have to do with our advisory program. So you can read them for yourself what summer work is. Summer's a really good time because, you know, as you know, our school years are so busy, and there's always something else to do and students to take care of, that in summer, when we have that dedicated time to stop and really concentrate on it, it's really helpful to teachers, and we can get our best thinking done. Many of these projects, we generally do just in the mornings, too, so that you have everyone fresh, because you know how it is, if you stay all day, and like after lunch, there's like a lull. So we just try to do it in the morning when everyone's fresh and really eager to get some work done. So I'm just going to talk about the two major projects that we have this summer. So one is at the elementary school, Tara Vasquez and Katie Nardini generally run that one. And really, what we're trying to do more and more is really have teachers be the ones who are, you know, I mean, we've always done that, we've let, teachers have been writing our curriculum here for a long time. We don't purchase, we write it. But a lot of times, our model was, they write it in the summer, and then we talk about scaling it up, and then giving the curriculum that was written to other schools. And we really want sort of everyone to engage in this. So this year, we solicited ideas from teachers, said, what is something that you're really passionate about that would fit in the spirit of the standards in your grade that you think would be, if you really got your hands into it, would be really exciting for you and for your students? And so people suggested things that they were really interested in, and will come together in the summer to work on that for their own school. So it may look different from school to school. One school may have a project about trees for this beautiful earth, and another one may have one about frogs or something like that, but it would still get at the same standards. And so I think that's a really exciting project, because I keep saying, like, you know, this is sort of like, we want to be tight on the curriculum, but we could be, it's like this sort of, I don't know how to explain, but loose-tight. You want, you know, all the students to get all the standards, but how they get there could look very different in lots of places. And providing that flexibility when people understand what the standards are is what we're trying to do. So that's a new sort of direction for us in curriculum work that you should know about. And then in the 7 through 12 Institute, it's this Elevating Instructional Practices Workshop for 2019. And really, it's a real focus on, we've really worked hard on, as you know, over the past year, on our standards, our assessments, we've thought about big projects, like doing really, you know, big kinds of project-based learning, those kinds of things. But we want to elevate the instructional practices of every day, kinds of things that happen in the classroom. And so an institute that really explores that stage three of curriculum design. So I'm hopeful that a lot of teachers will come join us. It's going to be really a workshop where they'll learn some things, and then they'll get to apply them immediately to their curriculum work. So I'm really excited about that. And as you know, last year when I reported out, we had a really large percentage of our teachers participate in the Assessment Academy, so I'm hoping for a similar turnout, but you'll find that out in next year's report, how many people were able to come and join us in that work in the summer. So, you know, probably no surprises there, but we could just continue the work. It will never be done. We will continue working on it and improving our practices over time. And it's the way that I see that it's also training, you know, it's not just writing the curriculum, but it's really good training for teachers to actually be writing, writing the curriculum. So I'll take any questions you have about this, or if you thought, anything else you were thinking you would see, but this is...
Just, Veronica, I'd like to thank you, I mean, it's every time you present, it's the dynamic, evolving nature of our curriculum is wonderful. So I'll just open up to questions, if anyone has any questions for Veronica.
Chris?
Yeah.
I have a question about the sign language. So we, I was under the impression that we did offer that this year.
Yeah, so we want...
You're saying we did not offer that this year.
Right, yeah, we did not, because we could not find a teacher. It's really hard to staff, just so you know, it's a .2 position. So a .2 position, I mean, that's one-fifth of a teaching position, so it's very hard to find somebody. So generally, somebody who would want a position like that is either somebody who's really looking for part-time, but that's like super-part-time, or somebody who's able to cobble other things together, so they may want a .2, but then they also have like a private practice, and they're looking for, you know, to be in a school setting and try it out, or somebody who's just entering back in and says, I'm willing to take a .2, and is this going to grow over the years? So it's really hard to staff, is trying to find that right person for it. So we weren't able to offer it this year, but it's, but it's very popular, so we really want to staff it, because a lot of students selected it and wanted it, so we feel really bad that we couldn't, but we...
So are we actively, like, that's posted, that we're looking for that?
Yes, yep. We tried a lot of, just so you know, too, I just want to say, we tried a lot of innovative things to try to make it happen, so we...
So maybe like an intern from ASD or something like that?
We've tried so many things. I mean, I think Kathy pulled out every connection she had, too. We also tried then to combine it with, you know, we have other kinds of positions that require, even the, you know, like even the tuning of the, whatever radios that they use and stuff like that, so we...
Hearing impaired equipment.
Hearing impaired, we try to see if we could find somebody that could do that part as well as this, and so we tried a lot of innovative kinds of solutions to try to staff that, because we were really wanting to get that off the ground, and we just, in the end, weren't able to. So we're going to try again this year, so hopefully we'll find somebody for that position.
Sometimes it can work out if we share someone with another district.
Right, sometimes sharing.
They already have someone, but it's not...
Yeah, I just remember seeing that we actually didn't offer it.
So sometimes we can do that, so we've tried all of those things, and we'll continue to try to seek out someone who could fill that position. But it is, it is challenging.
Thank you, Chrissy. Any other questions? Veronica, all right, thank you, Veronica.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, 5C Teacher Program Leadership Appointments.
Kim is going to present this, teacher leadership is a key driver of our improvement efforts, so this is a very important report each year. So Kim will provide a quick overview.
Sure. So every year, we give you this report that shows you the list of teachers in our school district from K to 12 who have applied for these leadership positions. It's important to keep that in mind, that this is an annual application process that teachers and administrators take very seriously. And so these are the teachers who, some of whom are the same teachers in these positions the year prior, and some are new to their positions. It's really wonderful to have these opportunities for teachers who don't want to leave the classroom, but they'd like to take on a leadership role in the district. They're clearly hard-working, excellent teachers, very talented individuals who work closely with their administrators in the building or with Veronica to ensure, you know, that we do have the high-quality curriculum and instruction. They facilitate professional development, they facilitate, you know, weekly meetings with their teams, so they're really critical to the health and vitality of this organization. They keep us thinking about new ideas, innovative practices, and we really, we couldn't do without these, these teacher leadership positions. So I'm always thrilled that we have more than the number we need who are interested. And sometimes, you know, people will say, I'll step back for a year to give someone else an opportunity, and that's a wonderful thing, too. So I just always want to recognize them for their hard work and dedication and how much they mean to us. So you have this report as a reminder of, you know, how much we appreciate the work of teacher leaders in this district.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Any, excuse me, any questions for Kim?
Sorry, at Irving &amp; Robbins, you're hiring special ed?
We don't have somewhat, we aren't sure who's going to take, no, we are hiring for special ed, but in this case, we aren't sure who's going to take on the leadership role.
You all set, Chrissy? Okay, thank you, Kim. Okay, next item, 5D Engaged Learning Update.
We have several items. East Farms highlighted a task about what makes characters strong in books. They are reading. At West District, students are learning about discovering the power of words, including demonstrating an understanding of word relationships, and how specific word choices shape the meaning and tone of their writing. And at West District, they also highlighted an outstanding Math and Literacy Night, which I attended, and you can see some wonderful photos of that very special family evening. IER Scholar Leaders were named, and so those students are highlighted in the Engaged Learning Update. Union celebrated their annual May Day celebration, and Westwood's highlighted a video about student choice in art that you can click on and view.
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions? Next item, 5E Professional Appointments, retirements and resignations, of which we have a couple, review.
And so this is the time of year where we will receive resignations, so you can see that we have a few here.
Thank you. Next item, 6A Budget Impact, Budget Update. Vince?
And Tim, Tim is here to help out with some of my report to the board, when Tim's going to say a few words on emergency repairs that we came up at the last board, board meeting, so we have more of an update on that. But in regards to our current budget update, the same areas I'm watching as we're coming to close the fiscal year, special education areas mainly, in-town, special ed transportation, evaluations, and consultations lines, also special education nursing, and nursing in general, I'm watching. But as I mentioned at the last board meeting, the area that is having the most pressure on the current budget is repairs to our facilities, specifically repairs to FHS, and then more specifically roof repairs to FHS. Before I give Tim a couple minutes just to talk about those repair areas, I'll just add a couple of things as updates about other big capital projects, things about in the budget. The Union School facade project, we do have a, an agreement with a contractor, Armani Restoration is going to be the contractor. They're a very well-respected firm in Connecticut who has a deep portfolio of other projects that they've done on big universities and school buildings and many buildings in Connecticut. So I think it's a terrific, it's terrific that they came in and gave us the best bid. And I know I felt very good while at the meeting with Tim and our primary architect, one of Rusty Malik's team members at Quiz and Barry Arcary, that I think Armani's going to do a good job on that project. And so that's moving along. And the Millennial Builders have begun their assessments, they've already started their meetings, they've already been around to all of the schools that they're going to be doing the security vestibules at. So that is all, even though school's still in session, they're on the path to, for those projects. In regards to my last comment, and I'll give Tim the floor, I do not have a formal update about the roof projects from the state, and I don't think, there's been any formal, anything. Informally, through our architect, Al Jakunski, he's optimistic, because a number of questions have come to Al recently about those projects. So Al is feeling somewhat of movement right now in the application process, and he's optimistic. But formally, I still don't have a approvals for the state grants, so. But Tim, I'll let you say a little bit about the roof repairs up at the high school specifically, about the emergency repairs.
Yeah, so Vince had asked me to put together just an outline, talking about the roof repairs that we have at the high school. As you know, most of it is centered around that 1992 built-up roof that was listed in our report as two years ago, is in fair condition, is, you know, starting to fail. Obviously, it's not a new topic, but he wanted me to put a dollar amount to these, to these repairs. So our normal roof repair and preventative budget, we have roof repair and preventative maintenance budgets in two separate accounts accordingly. We have $3,000 for repair and $6,500 for maintenance, regular preventative maintenance, for a total of $9,500. That's each fiscal year for roof repair in the, at the high school and preventive maintenance. This year, our grand total, including, as you know, we came to the, to this board a few meetings ago and asked to appropriate funds for some major repairs at the high school. One of them, we were able to accomplish, one area we were able to accomplish over April break, and it was a pretty significant area, and that was over the administration. You'll probably remember this little diagram. So these are our largest areas of concern, and we completed this Section Y, which was, this repair was a total strip of the roof, right down to the roof deck. This is all over the administration building. The copy area is about here, and this is the very end where the elevator is and all that other, so it's a large section, Section Y. That was completed over five days at April break. So that, coupled with the other repairs on the roof, including plumbing, relative to roof drains, acoustic tile, changing ceiling tiles for, after roof leaks are fixed, an air scrubber that we rented, is an air purifier for the admin area, and these, the total spent this, so far this fiscal year was $277,000. And again, that includes that major repair, and that includes some of the dollars that you appropriated to us earlier. Does any other question?
Yes.
So I just have a question about the 90, you said it was 9,500 normally is what's allocated? Is that just for the high school, or is that a district?
Just for the high school.
Right, just for the high school, okay. Thank you.
There's a normal roof, there's those for all of our buildings, all our facilities?
Yeah, I just wanted, yeah. I just wanted to make sure we were, the 9,500 was only for the high school? Okay.
And then, real quick, just, Tim, within the, inside the district, could you give a couple examples of other, like, emergency repairs and the scope of what they would be? You know, like, in this past 12 months, you know, what have you had?
Right. Well, I started at the high school, so I'll continue there. We had some plumbing issues at the, at the high school, mostly involving drain lines and some supply lines. And again, just to the age of the building, cast iron drain lines under concrete floors that shift over time, just, you know, don't hold up. So I've had about $2,500 in repairs there. At Union, we put about $2,500 into investigative work on the limestone, getting prepared for our bid documents, and also putting a fence around the front of the building to keep, keep folks away from the facade. And at Irving &amp; Robbins, we had a, an issue there, one of the classroom floors, science classroom, where we were getting water infiltrating into the building. We regraded outside, added some drainage, and we spent $5,500 there. So you can see the, you know, other, you know, emergency repairs pale in comparison to the high school roof.
Sure. But the administrative wing is all taken care of, no?
Yes, it is.
That's complete.
Yeah, the contractor did a terrific job on that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. They, yeah, they got together within two weeks, they mobilized, there must have been 20 people up there working on that roof, and five days later, you wouldn't know anyone was there. Beautiful, beautiful.
They did a great job.
Okay, any additional questions for Tim or Vince? Okay, thank you, guys.
Could I just say that, you know, Tim and Vince have, it's wonderful to have these projects in our budget, it really is. And we're so thankful and appreciative, but it does take a lot of time to ensure that we're getting proper, you know, funding and making sure that the state is going to give us money back, you know, given our reimbursement level. So there's a lot of work for Vince and for Tim. And then Tim also is kind of on-the-ground problem-solving with our custodial staff. We're just so fortunate to have such outstanding individuals working on our facilities each day, so I just want to commend both Tim and Vince, as well as our custodial staff.
Thanks, Kathy. But really, really, Tim deserves the credit, because he's got deep knowledge in all different types of facility things, so it's a big win for Farmington with Tim in this district.
Thank you.
A great problem solver.
Thank you, Tim. Thanks, Vince. Okay, next item on the agenda, 7, New Business 7A Approval of the Cafeteria Contract.
So as you know, we are required to renew our cafeteria contract on an annual basis. I see Jose and Fred are going to come up. And we do have a very strong program and partnership with Chartwell's, and we're going to talk a little bit about the renewal percentage increase with all of you. And so we welcome Red and Jose to the table, and we want to thank you, Jose, for some wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Food this evening.
Beth is handing out Amendment Number Three, and this would be, because the actual contract, we're on extension amendments of the, of the, of the contract. And the, after, after negotiations, the recommendation is a 2.8% increase. The state does dictate what boards of education can give as a percentage increase. They gave us a level of 3%, but then there's always a meeting that Kathy and myself and Tom O'Donnell and Fred and Jose have, and some... and myself and, uh, Tom O'Donnell and Fred and Jose have in some negotiations, and this is what's being recommended to the board. Um, and, uh, um, I don't know, um, Liz, if you wanna say anything too, since we're right off of the cafeteria advisory committee meeting, um, but about the, how the year is and everything.
Yeah, I'll just say that I think it's great, I mean, I, obviously, um, I think that you can tell just by looking at amendment three, if you look at, um, paragraph four G, um, you'll see that really the, the prices are great. Um, I think that Jose and Vince have done a phenomenal job of really, um, facing the, uh, the bottom line has gone up, but not by, by raising the price, but more by driving participation, so that's really key here. So what they've done is that meal counts, um, have gone up as of now, as of April of 2019, the meal count is up by 177. So, I mean, that's a lot, that they're doing a great job by driving participation, which is key for the participants, because that keeps the price down. So if you can make money by driving participation rather than price, that's really key for the students and the parents of this district, so do, they're doing a great job with that. Um, you know, the, the sales is up, uh, the, um, the profit is up, they're doing a great job getting all the grants that they can. So, um, I really do think that it's, um, you know, going really well, and it's all participation-based, really. Um, the only thing we need to do is get breakfast at IAR.
That's the last school.
So, uh, and, uh, then we'll be good to go. But, uh, good job, I really think, I think it's headed in a great direction.
Yeah, thanks, Liz. And, uh, not, and on that topic, breakfast at, um, IAR, I think you.
Yeah, we have, um, we have a launch that started at the beginning of next year.
Yeah.
And that'll be our last school.
Right, so, good.
Thank you.
And, oh, that, good news at IAR, you said, you wanna talk about the, what just happened at, we have at IAR with the cart?
Yes, so we, um, were able to purchase Deli Cart, which is, um, it serves hot and cold product, and, um, at IAR, um, there's a challenge because to get across the cafeteria, you can only go one way when students come through, so with the cart, now we're able to, um, extend our servery, more products, so it's now it's a lot smoother transition. So it's been very beneficial. It's also on wheels, so next year when we start our breakfast program, we'll be able to wheel it and make it portable for maybe some grab-and-go breakfast items.
Great.
So, yeah, because there's a not, there's not a lot of space at IAR, so that's, that was a great idea that Jose had, and they're implementing it, so he's really a problem solver.
Thank you.
Theme of the night, apparently.
Very good, yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Jose or Fred?
I do.
Yep, Chrissy?
Um, just on the back page, G, it says that the lunch meals will not be lower than, is there a cap as well? Or is it just you can add as many things, but for like, I just don't understand the wording, I guess, it's, it won't be lower than?
Right, so, so what it is, is the state always has a, a spreadsheet where we could enter our numbers, and it'll tell us if we're averaging as a state, as one of the towns in the state, or we're low or above, and we're a little bit above target, so we're doing good with the pricing.
I, I think, do I?
Is, is that what?
No, no. I think, I think what her question was, is that it's saying that it can't be lower than $2.80 for elementary schools, is there a hot, like, can it just go up to $18 per meal? Cause it says it won't be lower than two.
Yeah.
There's no high for that, but based on the meal equity pricing that, the, the form that these guys have filled out, there's a, there's a minimum that we can do, there's the average, and then we don't wanna go above that because that would, that would tell our customer base, we're not doing our job. And to your point, we wanna continue to increase, uh, participation without raising prices, that's the best way to do it. So that's kind of our guide from the state and the federal government that says, here's what your high-low, and this is where you should be.
Okay.
But we're not increasing prices.
No.
In this renewal.
We're in really, really fine shape.
We're keeping them steady.
Right.
For next year.
Thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions?
Can I?
Yep.
I just, just to ease everyone's mind, so this is the way the contract's been written all of the years, and it hasn't been, so even though that's the way that the contract is written, it's not, they don't raise the prices, it's been participation-driven, so, like, it's not like all of a sudden they're going to go rogue and charge $18 per meal, like, I don't, like.
I think it was just more the wording, like, it will not be lower than.
So this is the way it has been written, though. It's always says, it always says this, it always says, will not be lower than, because that's the way that it's worded, and it's primarily by the state. The state says that it can't be lower than this amount.
That's, that's right, Liz, and, um, the other thing I, I should've commented upfront too, the only thing that has, um, changed in this, um, document dates and going up by the 2.8%.
Right.
So this would be, if you took last year's board packet and looked at it, you'd see a different incremental increase that we'd recommended last year versus this year, but the rest of the document's the same.
I just don't want people to worry that, um, we, that the wording was changed as to the pricing. It's just always been this way, and, uh, I believe that Chartwell's has a commitment to participation versus pricing. I, I mean, I think that's how they wanna drive the income, so.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
Okay, if you have any further comments, or, that's great, okay, well, thank you guys for your efforts. Um, at this point in time, I'll, uh, propose, can I have a motion to approve amendment number three, dated May 20th, 2019, as presented?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, any questions, further questions, comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Okay, it's approved, congratulations.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Again, I will say that Jose has made such a huge impact on our, uh, food, you know, food service program, and we're very fortunate, get so much support from Chartwell's, but on the daily basis, Jose is here, and, you know, we're just thrilled, he's been working on, um, as we work on student choice and voice, he's working on student choice and voice, uh, could you tell the board just tomorrow you're going, you, you've been working at the high school?
Sure, yeah, so, um, yeah, we have a whole concept that we launched, with the student, student choice program, and it's, um, they're, they're able to vo- uh, vote right off their phones, live, and then we, um, give them a, a couple concepts, and the last one, they, um, they voted out one of the concepts, and tomorrow we launched the whole concept. Um, we're putting up signs and banners, and for, since the tasting, uh, we hear from the cafeterias the momentum, when are we gonna have student choice, and we have a date to launch it, so, and then we'll just do that hopefully like quarterly, and just keep switching the concepts, and the best ones keep them on the menu.
So what's, what's coming out tomorrow?
Um, it's called The Roos.
The Roos.
Yeah, which is a pretty, a chicken-based concept with some southern barbecue sauces and stuff like that.
Swing by for lunch tomorrow.
At 10:00, or at 10:30.
You can get there at 10 of 10, but you can't eat until 10.
Yeah, it was, um, it was a very busy tasting, we served over a thousand samples of product, and we had over 200 votes, you know, so they were just.
Wow, very nice, yeah.
Wonderful. Yeah. The students are the leaners of their own dining now, too.
That's right.
Yeah, and the program is called Student Choice, for the day we wear t-shirts, say student choice center, tons of marketing from Winterville, to, you know, have them included in.
That's awesome.
Wonderful.
One, one other quick thing, just while these two gentlemen are up here, but also just mentioning, um, Beth Haber's hard work associated with this. Jose and Beth work very closely every month in regards to our free and reduced, um, claims and on the fund, the cafeteria fund, which is the board's fund. Chartwell's is our food management company, you know, our folks that are helping us, doing a terrific job managing things, but the fund managed by Beth is in a very good place because of hard work that's happened and good management, so Beth, thank you for all your work there, too.
Okay. Okay, uh, excuse me, next item, uh, 7B, approval of the healthy food certifications, certification statement. Get it right.
So, this is something that we do every year, and we certainly do wanna sign up for it. Um, I will say that there are three motions, uh, associated with this. Gets a little more complicated as each year goes by, um, but this is, uh, something that, you know, we receive, um, refunds from, so we, we feel like this is very important, and we do follow this, this is the standard we have to follow, so of course we would sign up for this, um, given that we're following it anyway.
And the state's doing a really good job every year to, to really do their research, to be able to, um, give us different options and new options, and then we screen the choices that they have for snacks options, and the ones that, um, see fit, we try them out in Farmington, and, uh, it's improving all the car sales, cause every year, all the car sales is better than versus last year. So they, um, they have gluten-free, um, options and brands that we're capturing, um, brands like Annie's that are organic, that we're, we're purchasing to resell, so we're trying to maximize what they are allowing us to buy. But the list is getting bigger, and I, I, I feel better, every year, yeah.
What type of reimbursements are we seeing?
Um, around $20,000 every school year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, if I can have a motion, motion number one, motion to approve Farmington Public Schools' participation in the healthy food option pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 10-215F. The Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Aye, opposed, absentions? And if I can have a motion, a second motion, to approve the exemption for food items as follows. The Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event, and three, the food items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. A, and quote-unquote "event" is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly-scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The quote-unquote "regular school day" is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day, quote-unquote "location" means where the event is being held.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye, opposed, absentions? And if I can have a third motion, move that the superintendent be authorized to sign the healthy food certification statement as presented indicating the Farmington Public Schools will participate in the program for the 2019-2020 school year.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, opposed, absentions? All right, and that's, thank you, Jose and Fred.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, next item on the agenda, 7C, new course offerings. Um, first reading, if I guess, can I have a motion to approve the first reading of the new courses to be implemented at the 2019-2020 school year at Farmington High School as presented?
Motion.
Second. This is another annual approval that, um, we present any new, uh, course offerings, and also the next item is new textbook adoption, so we come before the board. So Veronica and Kim are here to provide an overview and then answer any questions you might have.
I'm just gonna, I'm supposed to have this, right? Before, before he comes and helps me out with this. So, starting with the new courses, I just wanna say that there aren't very many new courses, you can see there, um, but we got a lot accomplished last year, just so, you know, we, um, and American, we had the American Studies H last year, the whole English, senior English program all changed, um, we had ESOL and a lot of our math courses to go along with that sequence I've been talking about, the sequence change there, um, so some of those classes were changed, um, developed last year, personal finance, and then in, um, science, new advanced placement computer science program, um, and, so, I'm saying all that just to emphasize that we've done a lot of work, and we feel like it's time now to not have so many, uh, new courses, um, right now, and, um, so you'll see just a, a couple here. There, uh, no new courses for approval in our Capstone program, um, the one that was proposed for last year, um, didn't have enough student, and as you know, we change that all the time based on student, um, participation and interest, um, not enough interest, so we're not putting that one forward for approval, um, but we have a new pilot course, Equity, Advocacy, and Social Justice, um, that's very popular, a lot of students signed up for that, so that'll be a new, um, part of our Capstone, uh, program. English courses, we're gonna try a, uh, Writing Center Fellowship, so this would be really for 11th and 12th graders who have some strength in writing and, um, are able to help their stu- other students, so they'll get training on how to, um, help other, uh, students with their writing, um, and so that's a, it's a course, um, but a lot of the work will be done outside of the course in helping other students, but the training will happen in the course. Um, and in math, we're gonna continue with that math sequence, the Algebra II B, um, II B honors, um, Advanced Topics in Algebra II, and then the Advanced Topics in Algebra II honors, so those are all, um, math courses, and then the Geometry and Art and Architecture is a pilot, a half-year course, um, so, for those of you who can remember, I'm just gonna say that we're, um, ex- um, traditionally, we've had geometry be a full-year course, um, and what we've discovered, based on a lot of our research into what students are needing for, um, SATs and college, um, is that they really need more time on the Algebra II. Um, so really, we're expanding Algebra II, um, saying the geometry is really for everyone, really a half-year course, but then this additional half-year course to make, um, geometry for those who love geometry, cause there are those of us who love geometry, um, but now you can, um, study it in a real-world kind of context, um, after some of these requirements are done, um, or during, so that is really open to 9 through 12, um, but it's supposed to be geometry in a real-world, purposeful kind of context. Um, and then we're proposing, uh, Marketing II, Marketing's a very popular course, um, and there are students that are looking for another level of that. Um, so, it's not a huge list of new courses that we're proposing, um, but, um, really after having a large year last year, it's really a good time to, you know, have just a few to bring forward to you, but it is an area we're looking at all the time, we've, um, taken, um, every program of studies, um, in our DURG, and we've been, um, looking at, you know, what are some of the innovative options, and what are other places doing, um, that we should be looking at in, in different, you know, areas? So in science, we've looked, and what's out there, and I think that there are some things that in the next couple of years, we'd probably propose, um, but I think we're, you know, it's almost like we're trying to solidify what we're doing first, and, um, then we'll come with those, uh, later. So, I also, um, think that, um, another thing that you'll see is our, um, we're, we're gonna start, um, working more on the Capstone and the Aspire, um, because that's gonna be a big, uh, senior requirement for every student, um, so you'll see that in the future, too. So this is, you know, n- not too many here, but we're on top of it all the time, looking at, you know, what else can we do to strengthen our program? Um, right now, we're strengthening our program through the curriculum adjustments within our curriculum, um, but at some point, you'll, you'll be seeing more, so, um, so not too many this year, but, uh, they're all necessary, uh, changes, especially in the, the math, you can see there, that goes along with our, um, course sequence for math. So any, um, I'll take any questions on that.
Veronica, it, if we remember, I mean, what, wasn't there a couple ads, like, business class ads, like, personal financial statements and things like that in the past, that were very well-received? I mean, I see, so I see the marketing, is that something else you're always thinking about, sort of more practical, I guess, you know, not purely?
Uh, so, yeah, so the personal finance, um, I didn't even mention that, that was something that we did last year, and we combined it with our, uh, math course, and that's a really successful, uh, program, and in fact, um, we're looking at a different model of teaching it, that would be a co-teaching model with, uh, a business teacher and a, a math teacher in the same room with a larger group of students, so that's something that we're looking at. But yeah, in all the, in all those, um, extracurricular areas, we're looking to, to see how to enhance the program. Um, a lot of it, though, I think we've, in the past, I think that the place where it's, we're most innovative right now is through the Capstone and potentially the Aspire right now, um, to be able to be very flexible and adjust to like students' interests and needs, um, is an area that we've really been working hard on there, so, um...
Any questions for Veronica?
Yeah.
Yep.
What is the Aspire? So, um, I, has that come in front of the board in terms of the graduation, um, requirements?
But I'm not sure we, uh, named it for you at that time, so when we presented you the graduation policy, it just simply says a, a mastery-based summative assessment course, if you will. So when we presented you the graduation policy, it just simply says a mastery-based summative assessment course, if you will. So it's, it's the course that either students will choose to take a Capstone or an Aspire course that is a demonstration of all of the skills and dispositions in the vision of the graduate. So that's the assessment component of it. And as of the class of 2023, it, it does become a graduation requirement.
How is it different than a Capstone?
Well, we're still fleshing that out, so we'll want to come back to you with a clearer understanding of that. The Capstone we're envisioning is a, is only at the honors level, and Aspire would not be. But they're both independent, project-based learning. We're thinking of trying to integrate disciplines so that it's not just another course in the discipline, but it's, you know, something authentic, something we solicit student feedback and interest in, you know, determining. And also a little flexible, so that it might be kind of a, an interdisciplinary course with some broad overview topics. But within those big overview topics, students could really zero in on a narrow focus, that's something they'd like to research more about. And so we're still, you know, really thinking about what's the difference between a Capstone and an Aspire course. But, you know, certainly rigor and expectations that would distinguish an honors-level credit from a regular credit.
Is this going to be a state mandate? I know this has been coming for a long time, the Capstone.
It is.
It is going to be in 2023.
So incoming freshmen.
And we've already adjusted our own graduation policy to reflect that, so it's in there already?
I think you handed out to the board a crosswalk and Aspire was on that. Didn't you have a document that kind of crosswalk the old policy? The old and the new, I'm just not sure that we need.
We might not have.
Aspire when it's not.
I thought we did, but I don't know.
It may have been, but I'm just.
And even if it was, it's changed a little bit, because Aspire, at first, we were thinking was the whole, like, everything would be under Aspire, and now we've broken it out to Capstone and Aspire. So it has changed a little bit. But we'll keep you informed of any of those changes as we go forward. But I wanted to signal that a little bit here, just so that you know not only where we've been and what we've been working on, but also some of the things that I think are our next steps in curriculum and, and course development. And again, it's really nice, the Aspire, as Kim was describing, you know, we want to be more flexible with students and be more the things that they want to study and choose. So, and that's hard to do, and, you know, we have a comprehensive, large high school, a lot of students. So we're hoping that this could, you know, that the, however we design it, will allow students to really shape their own pathway rather than saying, and not that there's anything wrong with Marketing II, that's great, Marketing II, but also have opportunities at some time for students to say, this is what I'm really interested in, how can I study that and, and meet a requirement by studying this thing that I'm interested in, so.
Okay, additional questions? Okay, the motion to approve the first reading of the new courses to be implemented in the 2019-2020 school year at Farmington High School as presented, all in favor? Aye opposed, absentions? Next item on the agenda, 7D, new textbook adoption. If I can have a motion to approve the first reading of the textbook adoption proposal as presented.
Motion?
Second.
Okay, so we don't come with a lot of new textbooks. I think that, you know, we've been making do with textbooks that we've had, so we haven't really had, you know, a lot of textbooks come before the board. And also, in some cases, in, for example, English Language Arts, there's a lot more where choices and students are picking. So there's not like one textbook that I would bring you that all students are reading, like for this particular novel or something like that. Nothing new like that has come around. But at this point, there are a couple of books that I'm bringing to the board just to let you know about, because it will be, all the students in a grade or in a course will have a new textbook that we've not had before. So those are the kinds of books that I bring to you. So one of them is just a, a collection of short stories. And our, what we do is when it is something like that, all of the textbooks stay in central office. There's a, they're, they're put out in front of one of the secretary's desks there, so that anybody in the public could come take a look. And that's sort of the purpose of it, so that people can make sure it's something acceptable to the community. So these textbooks are there for the public to view. One book is the Sci-Fi Factor. It's a collection of short stories, and this is just to have something for a very popular genre, which is, you know, science fiction, 7th grade unit. And students use that as a way to sort of understand that genre, but also to use as a mentor text for any of writing that they might do for science fiction. It's a collection of short stories by, you know, people that you would know, like Ray Bradbury or Isaac Asimov. Those kinds of writers are in this collection. And so that's one. And then the other two are these very heavy AP math textbooks. And the reason that right now these both are coming to the board is because, I told you before, there's a little bit of a shift in AP. They're trying to do some of the things, even though there's a lot of content to cover and you have to move it along pretty fast. But they're trying to be cognizant of this idea of things being more purposeful as well. And so these books now have way more sort of purpose-driven kinds of, I should have marked the page, because I wanted to give you some really good examples of it. But a lot more purpose kinds of questions of that would be interesting more than, you know, I don't know, oh, this one's pretty tough, common design for cooling towers. But, you know, it's, that's not the page that I thought was the most appropriate of an example. But, but this one has a chapter project, for example. This is a population of rare birds on this island, and so you actually then use the, the, you know, concepts in there to solve it. So I think that the idea is to be more, to have, you know, resources for students that aren't just about crunching the numbers, but thinking about how you might apply it. So, you know, data analysis with real kinds of problems in this, this is the stats book, for example, and all of that. So I think it's in line with our, you know, own teaching ideas about the importance of purpose. And I think the AP program is moving in that direction, and these books, you know, are additional resources for teachers that have the kinds of problems that we're looking for right in the book, that they don't have to go out searching for them or inventing them. These seem to be the ones that fit the bill in terms of having the most of that kind of work for students to do right in them. You'll notice the price, too. This isn't the place where we talk about really the budget, but it's, it does come, and we've talked about this before, but it comes with the online resources as well. So when you get this, it comes with the online package. So you can try out problems online, and there's, you know, videos or demonstrations of how these things work built into the textbooks. And so that's, that's in there, too. These aren't the only new textbooks students are going to see. There, there's, you know, chemistry, but that's just a, we're just buying new textbooks to replace old ones of the same book. So they're not a new, these are just a different book than, that we, than we've had in the past. So those are the only three that were submitted for approval this year.
Any questions for Veronica?
How many do you anticipate you'll need?
Of each of these? So it tells you, doesn't it say it on there? I'm not sure if it does. But for example, this one, the, the collection of short stories, we need 30 of them, but, you know, more, you know, more students are going to use them, but sort of for a class to have at any given time. And then 60 of the stats book, and what's the other one? I don't know if I have it, but something similar on the other one, too. Maybe, I don't even know where that sheet is. Maybe 40 on the other one. Yeah. But those are already built into their budgets, yeah.
So are you ever going paperless? Tech books?
So really, what they've done, so the problem, what, the way that the publishers have adjusted their pricing model is that you're really paying for the six or seven years that they give you of the online platform, and this is basically free. So they've already, they've already adjusted to the new kind of way. So just in order to get access to the online, costs the $160 or $170, and then they throw this in.
The book is a threat. Additional questions, Veronica? Okay, the motion to approve the first reading of the textbook adoption proposal as presented, all in favor? Aye opposed, absentions? Okay, thank you, Veronica, thank you, Kim. Next item, 7E, Noah Wallace Fund Proposals.
This is another, Kim, presentation?
It feels like this is your meeting, Kim.
This is. This is a great meeting. So the Noah Wallace Fund Committee met on May 6 to review and discuss the submitted proposals from teachers and administrators for this year's fund. And they decided to approve funding for four different projects, very different projects, for a total of $27,489.90. You can see there that the, the projects range from a, a large funded project at Westwoods, similar to the project that was funded at Noah Wallace last year to enhance the audiovisual equipment in the large gymnasium or large areas to accommodate, you know, a much better sound and visual system when they have large school assemblies and fundraisers and guest speakers. It's worked out very well at Noah Wallace, and so this is the same kind of project for Westwoods. The second project has to do with purchasing materials and small equipment to promote movement breaks during the day. Those are especially helpful for some children who just need that little opportunity to go out in the hall and, and see three footprints, then hop, hop, skip, and then jump over a hoop and do various things that now I think our PE teachers and special education teachers sometime make up on their own, but they actually sell pre-made little kits for these things that are really engaging and colorful and interesting for students. So they funded that project. They funded a project at East Farms that's really going to promote better teacher learning about high-quality instruction and therefore benefiting students in that way. And then finally, a community garden-centered, child-centered project at Noah Wallace. And we'll see how that one goes. There's a little concern, I think if Mark were here, he was the one who voiced the concern about, if it's a garden, how are we going to keep the garden going during the summer? But I think Carrie and her faculty have a plan to have sort of adopt a week of the garden for specific school families, so that the garden will stay watered and weeded over the summer. And then when the plants mature, we'll be back in school and students will be excited to see them. So we're really, as always, so tremendously grateful to the Noah Wallace Fund to be able to enhance our programming this way. And I think this year is no exception to the wonderful opportunities afforded our students due to this funding.
Okay, thank you, Kim. If I can have a motion that the board approve the 2019-2020 Noah Wallace Fund projects and additional funding expenditures as presented.
Motion, second.
Any questions for Kim, comments? Okay. All in favor? Aye opposed, absentions? Okay, thank you, Kim. Do you want to go into a session? All right, if I can have a motion to prove, to move item 7H up on the agenda, which will be now the new 7E, I mean, 7F?
Motion?
Second.
Okay, so now 7F, approval of authorized signers for the CSDA Agreement of Child Nutrition Programs.
So we just needed to make an adjustment in this.
Yeah, and currently, the signers are Kathy and myself. However, Beth has actually, Beth Haber, the finance manager, has actually been doing the, the claims with me for two years. She is very familiar with doing the claims, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, can I have a motion to approve Kathleen Greeter, Superintendent of Farmington Public Schools, and Beth Haber, Finance Manager, to be the authorized signers of the Agreement for Child Nutrition Programs ED-099 and to sign claims for reimbursement?
Motion, second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Aye opposed, absentions? Okay, yeah, okay, yep. Okay, yep. Okay, next item on the agenda will be item 8, Consideration of Business Administrators Report.
Okay. I think on, on the first page, I'm just going to point out, you know, the asterisks are going to indicate where myself and Beth have, for the board's financials, already applied revenues that have come into the board, or we are expecting to apply revenues that have come into the board. And all these are the same, same areas that I was discussing earlier on budget update. Consultation Services, which has evaluations and consultations. The legal, legal services would be one. And in, in legal services, also it's Special Education Legal Services, which has driven, been the main driver, but there also have been a couple of different negotiations, which is a little unusual, that have occurred this year. We had the AFT negotiation, and we had the bus contract negotiation. So we've got a lot of contract review going on, too. So that's why legal services are a little bit higher. Summer school program is, you know, it's, it's, has, has that negative number, and that's special education summer services. Repair to buildings, what Tim talked about earlier. And that's where the choice revenue is going to be offsetting the, that area. Pupil transportation, on the second page, is a, is a, even with an application, is a negative number. And again, that's in-town special education, transportation that is driving that number. More smaller vehicles, more runs, period. Then, page three just tells you a little more detail on, on those pressure areas to the budget. And as we get, as we get later and later in the fiscal year, too, you have a few more that add on. But still, I'm not going to overemphasize anything on here, because it's not really too much different than what I've been sharing with the board all along this year. In the clearing and endowment and grants pages, I think we're, we're really coming down to just the excess cost, final, final excess cost reimbursement coming back to the board that's due shortly. And on page five, all the clearing and endowment ones that have asterisks that are still showing you the numbers from last year. As we close the fiscal year, those will be removed, and then we'll settle in on what the final numbers are for revenue. But I don't think that there's any extreme differences that we're going to be finding in, in that area as well. With self-insurance, self-insurance is still experiencing a negative trend this year. And while the month of April was much better than the month of March, it still was a negative to our budgeting. And that's it.
Any questions for Vince? Okay, if I can have a motion to approve the financial report dated April 2019?
Motion?
Again, any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Aye opposed, absentions? Thank you, Vince. Next item reported. Next item reported, 9A, reported the board chair updated committee meeting dates, we'll start with negotiations, Vince, Mark's not here, but I know Nicole was, is still moving, so I don't know if you want to, do you have better sense, because I know Nicole's still trying to schedule some dates.
Yeah, I want, I want to say, one, one date has been very much set, in June, and I'm sorry, I'm losing that date right this second, for when the council and the committee, is that it? 17th, that sounds correct. When the, when the council and the board committees are together for that meeting of the two groups. The other date is a, your first pre-meeting for negotiations, and I think Nicole is trying very hard with Tom Mooney and with their, their side to settle on a date in June for a pre-meeting.
That might be the meeting.
Yeah, maybe it's the 17th and the 20th. It could be the 17th that's, that's penciled in, and the 20th is solid, so.
That's true. That's right.
She was still emailing today, trying to, it was still moving, it's still flexible, I know, yeah.
It's a real challenge, they've had a change, um, too, in their leadership, and so it's a, it's a challenge with getting everyone's calendars together.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you. Curriculum?
I don't think we have an upcoming meeting, correct, Kim?
Curriculum, I'm sorry, curriculum committee?
Yes, we did meet.
Yeah, we did meet.
Yes. We don't have any more meetings.
No more, okay. Okay, communications, Helen?
We have a meeting coming up to discuss the summer newsletter.
Mm-hmm. And policy, Christine?
Nothing's scheduled.
Nothing, okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And then, next item, executive session, can I have a move, a motion to go into executive session?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, absentions, we're in executive session. Okay, we're back in session. If I can please have a motion to approve a leave of absence for Alice Amooney for the period of July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020, for a point eight counseling position in the district.
Motion, second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor? Aye, opposed, absentions? It's approved, and if I can have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, absentions, we're adjourned.